Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting, Monday, July 28th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you. Mr. Tekeeta, can you take the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Galloway.
Yeah.
Mr. Brasky.
Here.
Mr. Dens.
Here.
Ms. Mullin.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
All right. Item one, Mr. Clark, do you want to comment on our executive session?
The board has not held an executive session since our last meeting.
Oh, okay. That takes us to public comment. Just so everyone knows, there's a bunch of new faces here. We don't take, we'll take public comment on agenda items as they come up, not at this time. But is there any public comment? No hands? That's a first. Item three, we have an Eagle Scout project presentation for sand volleyball court.
Sorry, I'm running a bit behind.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with Kier Regan. He's in, in the process of doing an Eagle Scout project. He approached us probably a couple of months back about upgrades to the volley, sand volleyball court at the community park. It's a simple project, just replacing the borders there and put new sand down and so forth. Kier's been through, been in front of the Park and Rec Board, presented the project, and also we met with Joe Arnao from Public Works. So I'll have Kier talk a little more about it.
So I'm Kier Regan. I'm with Truth 316. I've been a Boy Scout since I was five, maybe. I'm a volleyball player. I've been playing volleyball at Nishamani High School since my freshman year, a couple of years ago. And what I'm looking to do is replace the borders of the sand volleyball court. They're currently a two-by-four, and I want to change them to a four-by-four wooden border around the court. It will be more sustainable to the weather and to keeping the sand into the court. As for the dimensions of this, it's an eighty-by-fifty, and it, I hope to keep it around the same dimensions as it already is. Is there any questions about that?
No, sounds wonderful. Back to your part of the nation. Is there anything that we need, we need something?
Um, no, I don't believe.
Sorry, my microphone wasn't on.
No, I don't. There is nothing to do. This is just him reporting on what the plan is, and then hopefully he'll come back when it's completed and show you what it looks like.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item four, consideration for approval for hiring police officer Brandon Hughes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, for consideration is candidate Brandon Hughes. Brandon graduated from Oregon State with a bachelor's degree, after which he was drafted into the NFL. He played four seasons in, in the NFL for several teams, including our Philadelphia Eagles, and he lives nearby with his wife and two children. He runs a gym in Middletown Township.
Any questions for Chief Whitney? Mr. Brasky? Mr. Galloway?
Uh, no questions. Interesting background.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Ms. Mullin?
No questions.
I have none. Is there any public comment needed? No? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six, we're skipping, number five is off the table. The gentleman took another job. Item six is Levittown Lanes, Alan and Mary Ella Episcopo, preliminary and final land development.
All right. Good evening. My name is Mike McGinnis with Begley Carlin. I am here on behalf of the applicant, Al and Mary Episcopo, the owners of eighty-eight, fifteen New Falls Road in the township, most commonly referred to as the former site of Levittown Lanes. I do have with me many members of the Episcopo family, and I'm going to have Mike and Al Episcopo at the end of our presentation come up and, if I can, just have them provide some brief comments to the board. I will be referring to this property as a singular property this evening, although it is, consists of multiple parcels, which are essentially bisected by Orchard Drive. We have up before you, take a look at a rendering, an artistic rendering of what's been put together, of what we expect the final product to look like. We also have a color site rendering prepared by Kristen Holmes of Holmes Cunningham Engineering, who's going to address the board in a moment. The portion of the property that you are probably most familiar with is approximately point eight-six acres. The total property combined between the site where the former Levittown Lanes was located and the parking across the street is approximately one and a half acres. I'm sure the board is familiar with the fact that unfortunately Levittown Lanes was tragically destroyed by a fire a couple of years ago. The properties are unique facially, and this was discussed when we went to the zoning hearing board a little over a year ago, because they are split zoned between the NC District and the NCR District because of the odd property configuration, which you're going to see when we switch to the site plan. The project which we are here to discuss tonight is the construction of a twenty-four unit market rate apartment complex. The Episcopos are pouring essentially all of their savings and money into this project to make sure that they do it correctly, and that is partially because this is a site that they have owned as a family for over fifty years. It means a lot to them to make sure that the end product is something that fits into the community and the neighborhood. We are with this site significantly reducing the impervious surface percentage, particularly it's going down by thirty-two percent. We are improving the stormwater flow. We are adding a considerable amount of green space, and I'm going to suggest, and we'll cover this in a second, for anyone who wants to hear this, almost all of the waivers for this project relate to existing conditions which we are improving. Most of those are partial waivers, which were constrained to ask for because of the existing site conditions. Often for multifamily residential, I would suggest for projects that come before you and before the planning commission, one of the biggest issues relates to parking. That is not an issue on this project. We have twenty-four units, and we have seventy parking spaces proposed. So again, we're making sure that this is laid out in a way that's appropriate for the township, and there's not going to be any overflow parking. My clients, because of their history in the site, are going to maintain ownership of the property. And I think it's important to understand, in particular for this project, that we are in a residential community along this strip of the township. Levittown Lanes was a bowling alley, was a pizzeria, sold alcohol, had a dumpster, people still parked across the street, the area which we're improving with this development, and was open very late. Now, when we went to the zoning hearing board, we received some comments of people wishing that Levittown Lanes was still operational, and that's because I would submit to the board that Levittown Lanes was run correctly by good people, people who are still here, people who are still going to run this apartment complex. And I would also suggest that the people who least wanted to be here this evening are the Episcopos. They planned and hoped to run Levittown Lanes forever. And unfortunately, because of what happened, that's not an option, and in 2025, it is very difficult to receive underwriting, to get approval, to reconstruct the bowling alley. So the question became, what was the most appropriate and best use for this property, given the strange composition? And they came up with, with this design and this layout, and are committed, again, as I said, to do it correctly. We appeared in front of the planning commission. We received unanimous recommended approval. We have resubmitted our development application to Mr. Jones's office for his review, so that essentially everything in the review letter has been addressed, with the exception of the waivers which we're requesting. I will note, in addition to the other items that we highlighted, there has been a concern that was expressed through the process of the location of the dumpster that we are proposing on this property, because again, it is in close proximity to residential communities. We are fine with, and we are going to volunteer this evening, to locate the dumpster across on Orchard in the parking field. That would move it away from the majority of the residential properties. We've run that by Mr. Jones's office. We think it's safe from a circulation and pedestrian standpoint. And again, I would reiterate at the outset that the majority of the people who were coming to Levittown Lanes were already parking across the street anyway. We're installing a number of improvements to make that a safer pedestrian condition that was here for twenty, thirty, forty years. But I did want to volunteer that at the outset, because that's not in the letters. But I wanted to make sure that that got into the record as something that we are willing to do, if that's desired by the township. What I'd like to do at this point, I'm going to toggle to the plan that Kristen has prepared. Just have Ms. Holmes do a very brief overview, and then again, if I could, just because of how much this site means to my clients, Mike Episcopo is going to come up for a minute, and then Al Episcopo, and then we're more than happy to go through any of the waivers that the board would like us to address, but thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Dens, may I ask Mr. McGinnis a question before he turns it over to his engineer?
No.
Okay. So you're agreeing to move the dumpster?
That's correct.
And if the board were to approve this tonight, you would revise your plans to show the new location of the dumpster?
That's correct.
And your clients would understand that once it is on those recorded plans, they can at a subsequent date move it to another location, because that would be not in conformance with the plan?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we literally just had that situation about a month ago.
We could even put it as a plan note.
A different complex decided to put dumpsters where they were never before, and because it wasn't on the plan that way, we were able to force them to put them back where they belong.
Yeah, we're, we're fine with, with that as a condition, and it could be a plan note on the recorded plan.
Good evening, Kristen Holmes. So the plan before you now is a site rendering of the overall plan view of the project. As you can see, and as Mr. McGinnis mentioned, it is three parcels, and it is separated by Orchard Drive between the two parking areas on the site. The proposed building is shown in a brown coloring on this rendering. The parking lots are shown in a gray, and the remainder of the perimeter throughout are all green now. Whereas today, it's almost a hundred percent impervious with gravel and pavement throughout, we are improving the greenery throughout, reducing that impervious by thirty-two percent and providing a vegetated perimeter essentially around all sides of this area. The other thing we're doing with this plan is, if you recall, the, the current condition prior to the fire was the driveway for Levittown Lanes is an open access along New Falls Road with parking essentially in the right-of-way of the roadway. So we're eliminating that condition, improving the safety of the circulation for the guests and the pedestrians of this, and having all of those driveways be taken off of Orchard to the rear of the property. So there is no turning movements in and out along New Falls Road directly from this property. It is all back on that lower classification road that has less travel on it. Additionally, as part of this, we are adding sidewalks along the frontages, so along New Falls Road, along Orchard Drive, as it gets you back to that rear parking lot, and then also along the parking lot across the street, where we don't have concrete sidewalk proposed, we have striping proposed along the parking area so that there is a dedicated pedestrian path that is outside of the roadway. There, so we are, we believe improving the pedestrian connectivity and safety. There are crosswalks being proposed in a couple of locations across Orchard as well to help improve that as, as the pedestrians go across between the parking lot to the building. And then certainly this represents too, some additional plantings, trees, we have shrubs proposed, so just additional greenery and trying to improve the look and the aesthetic as well as help with the drainage on the site for this property.
My name's Michael Allen Episcopo, son of Al and Mary Ella. Thank the board for hearing us today. I'll try and get through this without getting too emotional. A little over three years ago, we lost our whole world, and my whole life, I'm at, I'm here today because of my parents, what they did for my sister and I, from this property, everything we have derived from the sandbox in Levittown Lanes and later on, the, the pizzeria. I'm asking for approval because I'm going to continue my parents' legacy to my children and to have something that I can pass to them like what was passed to me. So I'm asking you to see what we're seeing, a beautiful building that's going to improve the, the look of the street. I hate driving by it. I can't drive by it. I hate seeing the empty lot. I'm sure everyone else does. I thank you for your time, and I'll let my father speak.
I'm Al and Episcopo. Thank you for hearing us today. I'd like to say, you know, I've been in the township since nineteen sixty-two, have a lot of friends. I guess we have a few enemies too, but, you know, that's the way things are. Unfortunately, we had a bad fire. Now we want to do something to improve the property and improve Falls Township. I believe the building that we proposed is a beautiful building, and I would hope everybody would agree to it. And there's not a whole lot more I can say, except I'd like to move this on and help my family in the end, because that's all, that's all that I'm interested in, is keeping our family going, and I think they want to stay in Falls Township and, and, and just keep the business going. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. As I said, Ms. Holmes and I are happy to go through the waivers. We can go through all of them, or if any of the board members have specific questions, I'll make the representation that if you look at the Holmes Cunningham Engineering waiver request letter, you'll see that the vast majority of these items relate to existing conditions that are partial waivers, because we're improving the condition, we're just not able to improve it quite to the standard required because of the odd composition of the property.
All right. I'll, I'll ask board members first.
Okay.
Mr. Brasky, any questions or comments? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Yes, hi, Mr. McGinnis. Can you just clarify? You said the impervious surface, you're decreasing or increasing?
We're decreasing it by, I believe, thirty-two percent.
Okay. Our findings of fact from the zoning hearing board say that would reduce impervious coverage by over a quarter of an acre. That sounds like you're far more than a quarter of an acre, or is it?
Well, because the site's not one acre, I can't do the math off the top of my head, but it's thirty-two percent of a approximately quarter or one and a half acres, which is probably around a quarter acre.
No, that, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Stormwater management, did you have enough plant and greens to cover the, the numbers with that?
Yeah, so with the reduction of the impervious that we have, it does, just by nature of the fact, meet the requirements of the ordinance for the stormwater management requirements. We did revise some grading to address comments to ensure that we have better drainage patterns throughout the areas, because there, there was an area of, of concern that we have revised and regraded along there. But yes, based on that, there's no structural facility that is required to go in. It does meet the requirements with, with, with what we have along the perimeter.
And this is not age restricted, right? This is fair market value for? That's all I have. Thank you.
Is there, are professionals have anything to add at this time? Mr. Wade?
No.
Is there public comment needed, sir?
Good evening. My name is Michael Mullin, and along with my beautiful wife, Jerry, who is present with me this evening, we've lived at one-twenty Amelia Drive for the past thirty-five years. Before I begin, just wanted a clarification. Could you point out exactly where this dumpster is going? I don't see it on the drawing.
So it, in today's plan, it's shown here along this side property. What we've agreed to do is relocate it into this parking lot across the street.
And, and anywhere in that parking lot, it could be.
Yes.
Just so you know, the original dumpster was behind the garage all the way to the bottom of that picture, where that's where the dumpster was.
That would be the best place away as far as from houses as you can get it.
That's far away from every resident. That's the, probably the option.
Is that doable? That bottom right corner of the parking lot across the street.
The only thing I'm opposed to with that is that's a daycare, and them kids are playing in, playing right there in that box in that corner.
That is a daycare, yes.
Yeah, so there is people there all day long.
It's, it's, it's quite a bit offset from the garage, though, so, but.
Thank you. Yeah, that's up in enclosure.
Thank you. Not in my backyard. This is something I've been told numerous times is not a valid argument to oppose your neighbor's construction project. This may be true. However, it is the reasons zoning laws and ordinances were created. I'm sure we can agree on that. So as to prevent your neighbors from building, say, a life-size reproduction of the leaning tower, a PISA built three feet from your property line and leaning in your direction. But as we all know, laws and ordinances can be very rigid, and it may be necessary to allow for some exceptions, and thus the zoning hearing board is created to allow for dialogue between parties and regarding proposed variances of these laws. The zoning meetings are meant to allow all concerned parties to voice their opinions. After hearing all public comment, the zoning officers then render a decision on whether or not to approve the requested variances in question. This brings us to the Falls Township zoning hearing board meeting scheduled and held in April of 2024. The agenda item for the Levittown Lanes land development project was scheduled to be the last item of the evening. Many of the surrounding property owners were present to voice their opinions and their opposition to this project. Unfortunately, the meeting went very late into the evening, and the Levittown Lanes agenda item was not addressed until after midnight. By the time, by this time, many who had come to comment had to leave in order to get to work the next day. This was a travesty. The board should have realized this issue was a hot topic, as they were given a petition prior to this meeting with over four hundred signatures of Falls Township residents opposing the proposal. Those of us that stayed were told to keep our comments to a minimum and not be repetitive due to the lateness of the hour. We all felt the entire issue was pushed through and should have been rescheduled, but it was not. Just before 1:00 AM and after a few house seous and the hammering of the gavel, the board approved all variances, and voila, Mike and Jerry, you now have the leaning tower, I mean, a three-story apartment building scheduled to be built one hundred feet from your bedroom window. Hurrah! On my way home that night, I realized that this approval was just another step toward turning Falls Township into a renter's paradise. Excuse me. I'm not sure if this is a good or bad thing, but brought to mind a statement made recently by the World Economic Forum, maybe you've heard it. It goes like this, "You will own nothing and be happy." I don't know about you, but that statement is alive from the pit, and I pray our children do not have to travel that road, but I digress. I stand before you this evening and gladly take the liberty to speak for all the property owners on Amelia Drive, Orchard Lane, and the over four hundred residents who signed the petition opposing this project. We disapprove in the strongest possible terms. As for Jerry and I, we are disheartened. We feel the congestion created by the addition of up to seventy-five residents on this small parcel immediately adjacent to us will have a negative effect on our lives and neighborhood. The building should be no higher than two stories and limited to sixteen apartments. This would be much more acceptable to the community at large. We also feel this board should send this issue back to the zoning hearing board so that any who were unable to previously speak may be heard. For thirty-five years, we have lived, worked, and raised five children on Amelia Drive and had planned to remain there for the rest of our lives. We are now not sure whether we should relocate or hold performances in our backyard for our new high-rise neighbors. We feel the township of our birth has let us down, and our elected representatives have no concern for our interests or well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Wayne, Falls Township. No one hates you. It's the idea of what the building represents. It's a monolith of a building and a poster stamp-sized lot. The density of the people that are going to be there is going to disturb the neighborhood. It will not be a nice quaint neighborhood where you two may live as attorneys and an engineer. I don't know where you live, but I live right down the street. I see the people that are using the street there. The street actually needs to be wider. When the fire happened, it took a day to put it out because there were no fire hydrants. Are you going to improve the fire hydrants there? You're going to widen the street? Are you going to make it a nice revitalized area that is nice greenery, nice small building like the gentleman just mentioned? Two stories? Perhaps you can dig a basement and put the Levittown Lanes back in there. Everybody would clap and applaud and love you and love your children. Just dig a little hole, ten feet deep, put the Levittown Lanes back there, build your apartment building two stories big, and if not, maybe I should sell my house and I'll move in there. The rent should be about the same. What do you think? Maybe it might be. Revitalizing Ready Guide, Chapter Two, Community Needs and Concerns from the EPA. There's a lot, a lot of information. I hate to read things back to you, but I do have a lot of information about the urban planning ethics. Have any of you seen this? Robert Clark? Mr. Clark? Hello? Have you seen this?
I'm not sure what you have in your hand.
Okay, I'll, I'll present it to you. I, I just would, wish you had your full attention. Buddy? Oh, Mr. Jones is not there. Won't forget that. Ethics in urban planning is a complex and multifaceted field that involves making decisions about the use of land resources and infrastructure to create livable and sustainable communities, sustainable communities. By understanding the principles, challenges, and the best practices of ethics and urban planning, planners, policymakers, and stakeholders can planners, policymakers, and stakeholders can make an informed and responsible decision that prioritizes the well-being of individuals, communities, and the environment. It's a lot here. And I'm sure everybody here on the board is so smart, you know all of this. And if you don't, I'm here to help you. Wayne, Falls Township, right across the street from the non-working sign that does not involve the community to tell about what this people, what Levittown Lanes is all about and how they want to change, the same is with the school and blah, blah, blah. No one knows about anything unless it's presented and we look for it in your website. It should be banners all over. If this is what the gentleman wants to do in his family for his legacy, then it should be all over so everybody can come. I don't understand why it's not. Deion Sanders, I also want to mention, he had bladder cancer. He didn't die yet, so everybody knows he's part of the NFL. I heard the NFL mention here previously. Has anybody heard about a major of Levittown? Lost his legs in one hand? Some blood-borne disease that's mysterious? Don't think it's mysterious. I have the answer. I'm a scientist. I have the answer, just like I have the answer about the family here with the Levittown Lanes and putting it there. I have an answer to help you get your building built. I'm not here as an enemy. I'm here as a neighbor. God bless you. And the young lady who lost her life with the white, uh, what was it? Mustang Chickenfoot Road, a moment of silence. Did my time run out?
Go ahead.
Well, no, her time ran out, so God bless you all and I hope you take consideration about what I said. EPA revitalization as well as you two, attorney and engineer, urban planning ethics. I'm sure you looked it up because some of what you've mentioned is on these papers. God bless you. Thank you.
Next?
Yes.
Just, nobody hates you. We're not against you. We're not your enemies at all. Our concern is for the entire community. We stand with you and we stand with the rest of the community. Please don't feel that way. My name is Jennifer Metzger. I'm a Falls Township resident. I live across from the Pensbury Digital sign that's out. It's been out since Thanksgiving. We've been complaining because we're concerned it changes the community not to have access to the information. And it's devastating to drive past a sign that's out. And it's the same with Levittown Lanes. Their sign is out too. And that's hard to see because you know something's wrong when people aren't communicating with the community at all. And that's what happened here too. When Levittown Lanes was lost, it's devastating to everybody. Not having appropriate fire hydrants and not having the firemen have everything they needed to help these, this family. It's hard to watch, right? But the concern that we have is this property sits in front of eight homes on Orchard Lane. It's a dead-end street. Those homes are also not having proper access to fire hydrants or anything. None of that's been fixed in the three years since Levittown Lanes has been down. Putting a 50-foot building there is not appropriate for the area at all. It looks over all of the homes and all of the businesses in the area. None of the businesses across the street or down New Falls Road are more than 35 feet. It's a nice idea that they're going to take it from 100% impervious, which is completely inappropriate in this area, down to 68%. 68% for everybody to know is still well over what it's supposed to be in the area. But we would like this to still be a commercial property, not changed to residential. With all due respect, I'm not sure that I understand if the family's legacy has been commercial operations, how they would be capable of running or managing a residential property, especially something like an apartment building. So with all due respect, that is one of my questions. Our concern for a couple of reasons aside from, you know, personally looking at this and feeling like you're taking one family's needs and wants over the entire rest of the community is not appropriate. So the petition that Mr. Mullen had mentioned is now up to over 420 signatures digitally. They also have 79 wet signatures, physical signatures, that are not even on this petition. So the petition is still growing with people in the area as we're learning about this property. We're asking that this stay commercial. We understand that they would not necessarily be able to put another sports complex in, although that's really what this area doesn't have, is a place for the children to have recreation. We don't have a Palace Center in this area. That might be something to consider. With all due respect, to make the $30,000 a month that you guys are talking about requiring, they could do that with parking spaces that are paid. I mean, seriously, if it's from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, $10 a day for 120 spaces, I think that comes out to somewhere over $30,000 and that would cover their financial needs. It would maintain it as a commercial spot. It would also allow it to be a timed space, which means everybody in the neighborhood would only be affected during the daytime hours, which is already set in the township. We have a couple of different questions about, you know, the striping paths and the crosswalks. Why aren't there sidewalks? Why is it that that wouldn't work? If it's already impervious, then that's not the problem. So I'm not sure I understand. I'm curious as to whether or not logistics have been figured out for who the landscaping is going to be maintained by? Snow removal? Are you going to be able to get trucks in and out of there? Property management? What happens if something goes down at 2:00 in the morning? Again, with all due respect, have they been flipping real estate? Or are they comfortable with running an apartment building? Just making sure that that makes sense. Also, there's been issues with sewer and water throughout all of Falls Township. We all know that. But on this particular area, this has not been updated for water and sewer management for an additional 24 families. It was never something that was planned for in this area. We don't actually require additional housing anywhere in Falls Township. We still have more than a household a day being lost to not being able to afford the rent or real estate taxes in this area. You see how long it took Middletown to fill the Oxford Valley Apartments. So I'm not quite sure I understand where housing is required right now. I'm not sure where the kids are supposed to be or play. Right now, we have people that have been hit by cars and that have died on New Falls Road. It's extremely dangerous area for people that are playing and on that street. It's a nice idea that they're taking the turns on and off of New Falls Road away. I'm not sure how it is that they think that they're removing it when you still have to turn onto Orchard Lane. But just the other night, coming home from the planning commission. You okay? Just the other night, coming home from the planning commission, I come down this street towards my home in front of Pensbury School District and three kids, two on bikes, one running across the street. We slowed down because it is very black and dark on that street. And we said out the window like, hey, be careful, you know, watch where you're going. They're not crossing where there's lights or any streetlights. They're not crossing where there's any stops. And literally got F-bombs thrown at us because they are unsupervised children. I don't know about you, but I wasn't allowed to cross the street until I was like 13 years old. These kids are on bikes at 10 and almost getting themselves killed. And I'm taking my time. I don't know that everybody's going to when it's dark out. That's another question that we have is where are the streetlights going to be? Like how's, how's like lighting going to change on the property? And then with the HVAC, where is the condenser? Because we talked about everything that's going to be inside the roof, but what about the stuff on the ground? How are they going to fit that in?
The what?
The rest of the HVAC system that has to be on the ground. I'm not sure where they're going to fit it in. It just, it's such a small space. I mean, you could literally put four or five houses there and it would be less abusive than 24 people on top of each other. Just lots of questions. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment needed? Any further comments from board members? Anything to add, Mr. McGinnis?
20 seconds, I can check a couple of those items off. There will be a property management company. There will be typical service contracts with landscaping companies. Snow removal is fine in terms of circulation. We are installing sidewalks. As you can see on the plan, we're improving pedestrian access. There is a reduction in traffic from a commercial use on this site from Levittown Lanes. Here, we're going to improve the stormwater flow, add green space, and obviously significantly reduce the hours of operation from when Levittown Lanes was operational with people and events that were occurring here compared to this use. Thank you.
Mr. McGinnis, did you, did you get approval through the Fire Marshal's office for fire protection? Because there was a couple of comments made saying it's not adequate water supply for a fire there.
We had addressed, we'd addressed the comments on a resubmission and did not have a new review letter come back from, from their office.
Everything with the Fire Marshal is to be, will comply. If we don't have it signed off by their office, we can't do anything.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to clear that up.
What? Real query.
Sorry. Reduction in traffic? No. Levittown Lanes wasn't a place where we had 600 people every day. It was well-managed. That's fantastic. But this wasn't a place that had 300 people an hour. It's not like a regular commercial establishment that they're comparing this to. And I would like to know where they're getting their information from. Reduced hours. You're talking about 24 families and all of their friends and families. You're talking about people who are going to park on that Orchard Lane street in order to unload their vehicles. We don't even know where the elevators are going to be for this building. And then, um, fire, just because it's a will comply, doesn't mean it's appropriate. If the men who had to put the fire out said they couldn't, then it needs to be addressed for fire hydrants. You're putting 24 families there.
Mr. Dipolito, can you comment on the fire hydrant situation?
He is the Fire Marshal. You're testing my memory, but it's been three years. What I remember, the hydrant out front did work. You're talking about a heavy fire load of a Bowstring Construction Building that when it burned, we needed more water than we got out of the one hydrant out front. So we hit multiple hydrants. That's what it boils down to. It's not the hydrants didn't work. It's not like they weren't there. They're, we just had to use multiple.
That's common though in a, in a size fire.
A fire that size, yeah. And then you working for the water company will know, we're trying not to steal off the same line. We're trying to go to different lines so we're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
Wouldn't the fire at this building be the same size? Bigger, bigger probably. They had to go all the way down Amelia to a.
Sir, if you want to make another comment, you need to come to the podium.
I said why a building this size would be a fire just as big as a bowling alley. And the, this, the fire, the hydrant that they used was all the way down the end of Amelia at near the elementary school. My neighbor actually tripped over the hoses.
Anything else from board members? Or professionals?
Thank you.
This would be Resolution 2025-19.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 7, consideration of approval for cooperation agreement between the redevelopment authority of the county of Bucks and Falls Township Fire Company Number 1. You want to explain this to us, Mr. Clark?
Sure. So when the, a local business or a local entity is getting a grant from the state or getting a grant, there needs to be a local sponsor. We recently did this with Snipes Farm, I think, within the last year or so. So the municipality acts as the local sponsor. There is no risk to the township. There is no cost to the township. If they default on this loan, it's not as if someone can come back to us. There's not as if there are any issues with us being on the hook for any money or any cost. The only real cost is the, some minor administrative things in the beginning by the municipality. But there needs to be a local sponsor.
All right. Any questions from board members?
No questions.
None.
Professionals have anything to add? No? Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That takes us to item 8, consideration of approval for certificate of appropriateness for 38 Old Locust Avenue. They're removing cedar siding and replacing it with hardy seeding cedar siding. This will unanimously, unanimously approved by the board. Any questions or comments from board members?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Any public comment needed on this? All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a RICON change order. This is one we're required to approve, right, Mr. Clark?
Correct.
What's the total amount, Mr. Tequita? $5,087? Is that just the first page?
$5,087.
Total amount for this change order? Mr. Gates from Grace Construction is present. Perhaps he knows the number.
James Gates, Grace Construction. The total amount for the five RICON change orders is $43,022.65.
All right, any questions or comments from Mr. Gates, Mr. Baraski?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No.
Ms. Mullen?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes, I have a fast question. I see the, some of the change orders have tax included or were tax exempt with this, correct?
Which one specifically?
I looked through it earlier. I didn't, I don't have it in front of me. It's just a general.
It is a tax-exempt project. There are certain categories that are not tax-exempt. That gets vetted during the.
Well, if there is, we can take them out.
Sure, and there'll be a deduct change order.
Okay.
For that.
Any public comment needed? Professionals, Mr. Clark?
Uh, no.
Mr. Tequita?
No.
Mr. Wade?
None for me.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tequita, do you want to poll the board?
Have you asked for a public comment?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. Mr. Galloway?
No comment.
No, you're just, we're doing, uh, we're voting.
I thought you asked a public comment. Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Baraski?
No.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
That takes the consideration of approval for Ronco Technology Solutions LLC to install security camera mounting for the Falls Township Police Station. What was this, an oversight or something?
Yes, the detention, the detention area needs to be, the ceiling has been redesigned completely. It did not comply with what needed it be done for the police. That's going to be part of a change order next month. We're working through the details on that. Uh, but this is the Ronco portion of it. Everything in that ceiling needs to be independently supported. And this is their cost to independently support their components.
This is $925. Well, a little bit less. Any questions from board members?
No.
No.
Any public comment needed? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tequita, can you poll the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
This is the Grace Construction change order. We denied this at the last meeting and they revised it and removed a lot of the stuff that, um, we weren't going to pay. Security guard and stuff like that. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
No.
Any public comment? Go ahead.
These were prepaid that we weren't going to pay. So what's the amount now?
These were, Mr. Clark? What, I couldn't hear what you said.
So these were prepaid amounts? This was for them charging, what was it, March or May? May to November?
Yeah.
Yeah, so are we prepaying it still or are we just reevaluating? Okay, so how much is this one then? Because it was 308 before with the prepaid.
$500,000, is that what this is?
$236.
$236.
$425. As I explained last month, we bill hourly for the time we put into the project.
So bill hourly, but don't bill ahead?
I would, I would love to.
We can't have a debate without being on a mic.
So I'm saying, fine, budget it. That's one thing. That's one thing. But you're asking for approval for the amounts and then he'll reconcile after the fact. Nice idea. But no. And then it was 308 before, now it's 236. So you're telling me that the security guard from May to November all of a sudden got, what, a third of the amount?
Yes.
Versus what we were talking about last time?
Well, I don't know what else was removed, but I know that was the big one that was removed.
Right. The big one was the 200,000 out of the 300,000. Now he's saying, no, it's the other side. It's just the 70,000 that's being removed. So which is it? What are the amounts for? When are they for? And why are we paying them ahead? Why can't we pay it when it happens? Not six months before it happens and then reconcile it in December? Just about the time you're trying to do the budget for everything else and holidays and busy and all the things. Bill it as it happens. Tell us what it is.
Let us spit it out.
We cannot bill unless-
Mr. Gates, please direct your comments to the board.
I'm sorry. We cannot bill unless this, these monies get added to our contract total. We bill monthly against that amount. And I mean, that's, that's all there is to it. It's an hourly rate that we agreed to. We bill for the time we put in exclusively. That gets reviewed and approved before we get paid. And that's it.
Okay. So I'm misunderstanding what a change order then is for Grace. They're saying this is a budget change for their quotes and estimates for their agreements with you. And then you're going to review it later? Because this says approval for a change order, which in my world means you sign it and then they're going to charge it and you're going to pay it. And there's not going to be another discussion about it. That's what approval means.
No, not necessarily. There's always discussion about it after the fact as well. And we try and recover costs. Correct, Mr. Clark?
Correct. But this amount, if approved, will be paid to Grace Construction.
For what?
For their-
For the work that they've done.
About to do, too.
Any board comment? Did I already ask that?
I don't know.
Uh, no.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tequita, can you poll the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Item 12, consideration of approval for bids for the pedestrian crosswalk upgrades at New Falls Road and Vermilion Drive. This has been a long time coming. The, what is the amount here now? 71,000?
The, the-
99.
It's 59,990 dollars.
50,000, 59,990 dollars. All right.
We budgeted 58,000, I believe. Two years ago. We introduced this project in, I think, June or May of 2023.
Yes.
Any comments from board members?
No, not other than it's, it was two years in the, in the making and excited to finally see it come through. Thanks to board, thanks to Matt, RVE. No thanks to our state reps. No thanks to the state of Pennsylvania. And just, and that's a state highway. They wanted nothing to do with helping us. It was probably the delay, the most of the delay was probably the state of Pennsylvania for a project that they weren't funding and wanted, they give no help with. But the township's going to fund it. And for anybody that's confused or not sure where it is, it crosses Thorn Ridge to Vermilion. And all those, all those students are walkers. They have to walk to school. So when we did the sidewalks, I think it was my first year on the board, first couple of meetings here, we approved the sidewalk along New Falls Road. And at that time, there was no discussions and no money to put, to finish it. We put ramps in and we did no crosswalk buttons, no lights, no nothing to improve the safety. So it's kind of bittersweet for me to finalize the project in what's, what's going to be some of my last meetings, you know, as a supervisor. So thank you, guys.
And what exactly? It's just, it's just, it's not a sidewalk. There's actually lights and stuff, too.
Yeah. So they're going to, so there's, there'll be push buttons. There'll be crosswalk signals will flash when they come across, when they want to cross what is now a shoulder that everyone passes on. That will, that, that will kind of be widened out right there. So now you will, there'll be a turn lane to turn into Vermilion Hills, making a left. I'm not really sure what was coming if you're driving from Tyburn. Not 100% sure what the drawing looks like. I wish they were here. They're not here tonight. I think the ramps were done, but the signage, but PennDOT, Matt, if you, shout me out, but I think PennDOT's actually requiring us to push. We're pushing signage and some repairs all the way back to New Falls or Hood Boulevard. All right?
Yes, they made a-
They dumped a lot of work on us as a township. That's stuff that they could have helped with and easy stuff. They could have did some signage work for us and some work on, on the sides of the road that, you know, we're going to work between the contractors and our public works to make happen for, for the residents.
All right. Thank you. Any public comment on that? No? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Second. Mr. Tequita, can you poll the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
That takes us to item, are we have any appointments tonight?
No.
No.
No. That takes us to item 14, escrow releases. We have no escrow releases?
We do not.
That's a first. We have the June 23rd and 30th minutes. The 23rd was an odd meeting. That was a meeting when I had a call in remotely for a portion of the meeting. I did watch the meeting. Any corrections or anything else? Mr. Baraski?
I wasn't here in June.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No questions on either.
No question.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Accept minutes as always, Mrs. Pullman.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Any questions for Mr. Wade on the engineer report? I'm not going to put him on the spot and make him go through it. Everything that's new is highlighted. Anything you wanted to touch on? Any new land developments you're aware of?
No, we haven't received a land development through June.
Okay.
Since, prior to June.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to item 17, the bill list. Any questions or comments on the bill list? Are there no questions? Any public comment? Yes.
Tony Batiste, I have a question on the electric, the water, the cable, internet, and telephone utilities totaling $93,844 and some odd cents. And I'd like to know why it's so much? Because if you figure normal households, maybe single house, you're paying about 300 in electric, 100 for monthly water, about 100 maybe for the cable, internet, and 100 for phones. So you're roughly paying about 600 a month for utilities for a single house. This amount equates to 156 houses.
This isn't just one building. This is every, all the facilities in the township that use electricity, water, and anything else. On our, our cable bill, I'm not sure why that's so much, Mr. Or the internet, I'm sure the police have remote internet and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
And the wireless bill is the same thing. It's crazy.
93,000 a month for all that's kind of high. And maybe we should be looking at some building reductions or usage.
We'll see that when a new building comes.
Yeah.
Just asking.
Yep.
Okay. And the other comment I have is on the Nest Tech Solutions. And it's a $34,000 bill. And I just want to know, have they fixed the problem with these meetings where people who are on the screens or are calling in are not part of the video of the meeting? You just get a blank dead silence there.
What are we talking about here? That, that standby S.
Oh, it's fixed.
Oh, okay.
The man behind the door over there says it's fixed. Pay no attention to that man behind the curtain.
Yeah. The "R" is going.
Yeah. Anybody else for public comment? Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Another public comment.
Where? Oh.
Hand.
So just two quick questions. For the minutes, you guys look at them and you approve whether or not they're correct. But sometimes they're not. But they're not posted for us to look at for you? So is there somewhere we should be looking for those before they're approved?
They're not official until they're approved. No, that's not possible.
They're not official, but they're also not always correct. But you're not asking-
Wait, when did you see one that wasn't correct?
Um, so I must have noticed it for May. Something must have been missing because when I was glancing through it, I was like, oh, that's not right. But then we always see the approval request. And every single time we're sitting here going, where was I supposed to look at it at for you?
Was something missing or was it incorrect?
It was just incorrect. It wasn't a major issue, but it's just, that's what we see. It's a common problem where somebody, you know, says something and it was either taken completely incorrectly. It's a lexical ambiguity. It's just like it was when we were talking here. I'm saying one thing and you're saying another and it's, it sounds different, but it's not. Like it's, at the end of the day, the information's not recorded correctly. We have nowhere to double check it for you. It's our public comments that are being recorded improperly. I don't know if you're not hearing them or you're not interested in them, but you're going to glance at it the same way.
But that's why we tell people to talk into the microphone.
Yeah. But you're going to glance at it the same way when you're reading in a month from now as you did sitting here. You're like, if you're not listening to it, you're not listening to it. The other question that I had was, when we do call in for Zoom, you know, supposedly we're allowed to sit on the Zoom and participate. Your website says we can talk and do like public comments and be part of the meeting on Zoom. But when you call in, the gentleman says no. And then you sit there and we just see the crest. And that's it. So I'm not sure what he fixed, but it's been a consistent problem.
If you call in to the Zoom-
Yeah.
They'll put you on the side until I ask for public comment. And if there's some-
He won't let you do it.
We stopped that about a couple of years ago. We no longer allow people who are participating virtually to give public comment. You have to be in the room to give public comment.
But it still says it on the website.
Well, the website needs to be corrected.
Thanks.
We'll change that.
What's the difference with the bill list?
This is a bill list.
The bill-
We're commenting on the bill list.
Okay.
Anything about the bill list?
Bill list is high. It always is. Whatever.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tequita, can you poll the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
We have an Obermeyer bill list for $3,690.50. Any questions or comments? Any public comment?
I got a question. I was going to jump in there real quick.
Go ahead.
What, what are, what are you still doing?
They're, to the best of my knowledge, still involved in the police contract arbitration, barely. They're still involved in some of the disciplinary matters where they are serving as witnesses or providing information to Campbell Durant, Pat Harvey, and Ben Patchen. For next month, Mr. Baraski, we can get some answers out of Campbell Durant as to what Obermeyer is still needed for. But I think that one of the main things is still some of the finishing up on the police contract.
Yeah. I would just hope that, you know, there's a lot of oversight on them. I think they did a terrible job for the township. And again, tonight, it won't be approving their bill.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tequita, can you poll the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Uh, Baraski?
No.
Mr. Dentz?
Yes.
Ms. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Um, that takes us to the Campbell Durant bill list. $24,120.21. Any questions or comments on that bill list, Mr. Baraski?
No.
Ms. Mullen or Mr. Palmer?
No.